Toothbreaker.
Hey, sir. How are you?
Good.
Yeah, you do.
You've been brought toothbrushes. This scares me.
Four hours, Joe.
I don't know.
You never know.
You know something I don't know? We in trouble?
Yeah.
No, why?
I didn't get lunch before our phones. That means better security. We're gonna get your whole one.
I mean, you should be set for a while.
Good. We'll see.
Everybody ready? All right, folks, it's one o'clock. Thank y'all for coming out to the first workshop, budget workshop. So we'll all stand for the Fledge of Allegiance.
At least we could have like, I'm gonna say it's so married. To the Republic, which says, my nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mars?
Good Lord. Most gracious heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity to come here and do the county's work, or just guide and direct us to make wise decisions, what decisions that are made best for this county. Beings to everyone, or at least as many as possible. And we're just, God has directed us as we go home today and keep us safe on the road. Yes, and please pray this name.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Well, folks, I'm sorry it's seventy degrees outside and we're here, but we gotta, we gotta do it. Um, Mr. Monday, you want to kick us off and explain the first couple on the agenda?
Yes, sir, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, good afternoon to you and welcome to budget work session number two. We admit coming out the gate, we're throwing a light at you today. We kind of to the point in the budget to where it's almost time for the staff to start balancing the budget. And we need to put before you some important pieces of the puzzle to get your feedback. And some guidance hopefully at the end of the meeting so that we can bring back a proposed budget to you in early April. And on your agenda, uh, what we want to do is just, uh, finish up a couple of things that we've been talking about before. Uh, Ms. Yusuf, uh, will walk us through a little bit about the outside agency funding. We did get two more requests in. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. And give you an updated spreadsheet on those. Uh, Ms. Yusuf will go over a revised revenue forecast. You know, budgets are fluid document. There's some pluses and minuses that she'll cover with you today. And then for the first time, we're going to show you an expenditure summary by department. And some of the drivers that are increasing the county's cost, like personnel, health insurance, and just general inflation that you would see in a budget. And then we'll shift gears and we'll go over, uh, where we are revenues versus expenses. So you get an idea about that. Then you'll have two important presentations today. You'll have fine EMS talking about increasing your EMS staffing. Like you've talked about before and how that might work. And you'll hear three options from them about what the associated pros and cons are on the cost. Then you'll hear a presentation from the sheriff, the sheriff's staff about their FY twenty six budget request. And then we'll wrap up the day with the CIP, talk about the recommendations from the planning commission. And Ms. Yusuf will go over the CIP fund balance with you so you'll know what her starting cash is and that fund. And then hopefully as said, we'll get a little guidance from you. And we might even talk about another budget work session depending on what we hear today. And we work for you and you know, we'll set up whatever you need going forward. If you need another work session before the proposed budget comes to you, we'd be glad to compare calendars today. So, Mr. Chairman, that's just a heads up of what to expect today.
Okay. So it's Pahn's will take it and go through, go through the outside agencies first?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Pahn, how are you?
Very good. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
I have to apologize upfront. I have been sick. So now and then if you're cough and just want to give you heads up. Um, outside agencies, as we have gone through in details in the last board session. Uh, we have incorporated, uh, the total, uh, as, um, discussed in the last meeting in the FY twenty six budget, uh, expenditure. I did not bring with me a copy of the, uh, request one by one. But I indeed have incorporated the total as discussed in the last meeting. Do you have any questions for me on that particular one?
No, ma'am. Was there a couple of new ones, Mr. Monday?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the Amelia County four H, they sent their request in under the board asked specifically about that one at our last workshop. And the information that I have, their request for FY twenty six is for a thousand dollars. And then we also got one for Virginia's Crossroads. That's the tourism group and their request is for forty five hundred dollars.
Okay. Did we go through and I thought we did talk about putting a fund, a line item in there of about five thousand that we would have available through the course of the year to, is that, I don't see that on here.
We can certainly add that. That would be like a contingency fund that the board could draw from in the future as the board sees that.
Is everybody still okay with that?
Yes.
How about the four H? Request?
Yeah, I'm gonna read that.
And the Virginia's Crossroads, that's not tied to any crossroads you're on.
Yeah, it's tourism.
Okay. Yep. And I guess we did get a grant out of that last year for the village signs. I guess that's where they come from. So y'all cook good with adding the thousand? And the forty five hundred into outside agencies and with the five thousand in the contingency line item?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you get all of them, Mr. Monday?
Yes, sir.
All right. All right. Do we start going through this, this book, Pahn? Is that your plan?
Sure. Let me just quickly, I'll provide you with an update, uh, with our slide on revenue estimation for FY twenty six. Uh, the number as of today.
Can I, can I hold, can I stop you just for one second, Paul?
The ten six for the Blackstone Amelia bus. I thought we were negative on that. And that's still there.
We did, we did say that. So we're gonna take the ten six out?
Yeah.
Mr. Monday?
We will. We will. We'll make that change.
I didn't catch that. Before we leave it, is any other? Let's take it just a brief minute to go through it and we'll uh, food pantry. And Health Department. Bright Point. CRC. Crossroads Services. Free Clinic of Palitan. Heart of Virginia Free Clinic. At Longwood, small business development. Brothers Cancel. Senior Resources. Peamont Water, Soul Water. Steps. And then I know we added the housing request. And that's a full year at that, at that rate. In Madeline's House. And then we just did the Virginia Crossroads Tourism. And the Legal Aid Society. And then ours. And then move the, I forgot to four H. So that goes over into the next column.
Yeah, but he picked up a hundred bucks taking off the bus and adding the three. It's a wash.
Are we good with that? Everybody? All right. We got all those notes for some others?
Yes, sir. I got it. Thank you.
All right, Paul, we'll back at you.
Very good. Good news on, um, uh, FY twenty six estimated revenue, uh, is now better by a couple hundred thousand dollars. Um, it's due to a couple areas whereby I up the, uh, revenue estimation. One is on sales tax. Mr. Monday just shared with me a state report that show, um, the estimate for the year of twenty six to be one point five million and eighty five thousand and some change. And then we got an update on the, um, state update for compensation board for sheriff's office, treasure office, and commissioner revenue. So for the collective total, uh, a couple hundred thousand dollars better than the last time. Thank you.
Is that the figure of twenty six million?
Point six, correct.
And that's like twenty six point eight maybe?
Uh, no, now it's twenty six point six, almost twenty six point seven. I did not get to update because I got, uh, just not too long ago. And there are lot numbers I have to incorporate, but for now I just verbally updated you on
So what was the latest information? What was the total increase you projected between the two?
Um,
Proximal?
It's about two hundred thousand dollars roughly.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. At least it's not going down. It's going up. So, okay, now are you ready for expenditure summary? Let me just bring up my slides.
That's last.
Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. There are a lot numbers indeed. I cannot make it more interesting. It's cut and dry. If I go, uh, quickly, let me know. I will try to slow down. Let me just make the screen bigger. Okay. Very good. All right, um, this slide here provides you with an overview of the, um, total operating expenditure request across the county. It's close to thirty million short by a couple hundred thousand dollars. I would like to highlight a few functions that has the most, um, requests. The first one is very transparent. Public safety and public works are forty one percent of which public safety is about thirty six. The reason I combined the two, I tried to classify based on the guidance from our year end and, um, accounting principles and followed by education. I just want to point out up here on the upper lap, I added slide number, or you can look at the low, lower right corner as well.
Stop. Why do I have exactly what she's got on paper or in the email?
I don't know.
Cause I don't have it. I don't have the numbers. This isn't what I had on email. This is what I have on paper. I'm missing it.
Yeah, we said.
Twelve point one, two point six, seven point eight. I'm missing everything.
We only have the person.
And that's the email I had.
That's what I'm looking at. Let me, how many of you are on?
No, I agree with the P D. Yeah, it's something about not being in PowerPoint, but.
Yeah, I don't know why it didn't load. I'm looking at the original email.
It doesn't matter. We can go, but I want that, please.
I'm gonna, I'll email it to all five of you right now.
It's fine.
But if it won't load.
No, yours isn't the same either, though.
Yeah, yours doesn't have the dollar amounts with it.
It looks different than yours, though.
Yeah, this is slightly different problem, but even if he got it.
The copy we have, Paul, doesn't show the amounts like.
Oh, okay. What I can do, I can follow you, but I have to exit out from here. And then get into the network and forward you a copy. Your network?
Here.
If not.
Can we just write the numbers in so she don't have to go out and come back in?
Yeah, it'll take a while.
I don't need it right now. I don't, I just.
Right afterward.
Okay.
But we just want, we wanted to match. Yeah, I agree with them. The numbers are helpful, too.
True. Yeah, um, there are a lot numbers. So, um, you're correct. It's good to follow the same set of numbers. All right. If you're okay, if you move on, um, yeah, a lot. There are a lot more slides to follow. Altogether, there are twenty five, but the first twelve are very key to a summary of what, uh, got asked for the year. This is an outlook on a, uh, unit of one dollar on how each local tax dollar will be spent, um, if the request is approved by the board. And again, uh, at the bottom, I just want to point out, try to reconcile to the slide that we just left. Public safety is about thirty six. It's on the left-hand side and on the far right is five percent for the public works. On here, uh, I slice and dice, um, a lot of increases based on, uh, what I think is needed to help the board understand the changes. So the total increase for the year is about four point six million, um, uh, representing about eighteen point four percent relative to approved FY twenty five budget is budget to budget. And I further slice and dice this into two buckets, personal costs versus non-personal costs. Um, two point eight and then one point nine million in other operational costs. So it's only sixty forty split on here. Uh, let's hold up on all your questions until we are happy into, um, my slides. Uh, slide number five, um, the title indicating operating, that means I did not incorporate CIP yet on this page. Operating expenditure increased over last year. It's about four point six million. And a small.
Hold on a minute, Paul. Can I stop you right there? Can you, um, can you bump out a minute and send us what you're looking at? Cause it's, it's not matching up.
And we don't have it.
Oh, yeah, sure. I'm gonna do that.
Are y'all good working on the email? Do y'all want paper copies for this?
No, email side. I just need to see.
Your version is better, by the way. We're commenting. Your version is better, but
That's more.
It just needed to match.
Yeah, uh, because I had to do it in a rush and I keep adding. When I go back several times, we didn't miss anything that I essential to the understanding of the change. Uh, let me just exit out here and then I will be right back.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Absolutely. Okay.
Can you, um, after you get it, we'll, we'll continue on, but could you get a couple of copies printed to Dexter and Benji?
No, I want a copy.
Just, just print. While, while we're in the meeting, anyway.
That's where I do my notes. That's how I do my figure. Thank you. Keep it up.
I'm back. I sent a copy to Mr. Monday and Ashley if they don't mind sharing that with the board. Thank you.
I'll send it to them. Got it. I'm on it now.
You still can see my screen, right? I will wait until you get your copy.
I, yeah, we're gonna have to share your screen again.
Very good. I apologize for that. That a lot of information.
That's fine. That's fine.
Well, like I said, the good news was we were commenting, your newer version has more detail, so that's helpful, we'll catch up to you.
Very good.
Alright, you can share your screen and we'll we'll pick back off, you go on and make copies for.
Well, it's also.
I also forwarded a copy of the revenue estimate.
Uh huh, yes, we got that.
Very good. And it will get better by day, so just stay tuned to the revenue.
Can you share your screen again?
Oh, you don't see? Oh, okay. Um, let me just see what happened here. Technology.
Silver certificate. I think he's getting ready to pop, let him stretch, let him stretch out.
Something wrong, okay. Um, I have to exit the um. The network, that's why. Okay, sure. Now I get stuck. Okay, let me just exit completely because it just. Okay, now can you see?
Yes.
Very good, okay. Once we go past the technology, we are good, okay, this is where we were. Um, on this slide, it's still on operating expenditure. But um split into different funds. For the main chief operating fund, Fund One Hundred. The change is majority, and for sanitary district, Fund Five O Two. The increase was very, very minimal, seventy-three thousand four hundred forty-five. That wasn't some change, for the collective total of four point six million. So I will walk you through major highlights on four point six million in the next screen. But before we move away from this screen, the um bottom section of Fund One Hundred. I box in red to show I have incorporated the uh school board. Uh additional requests that they presented in the last meeting. With a shared copy of the full at by twenty-six. Um, they requested the bare minimum, which I have incorporated. And then the sanitary district, I also incorporated uh the, the amount that. Is needed to uh balance the budget. Okay, next screen. This screen is an expansion of slide number five that. Shall I wait?
It's, we're, we're sharing.
Thank you.
That'd be good to continue now. Very good, alright, uh I will repeat on slide number six. It's an expansion of slide number five whereby I have incorporated C I P. Uh expenditure requests. Um, you can see to the bottom of the page where I box in red, Fund Three Zero Four. I have incorporated the recommendation from planning commission. Uh for the total of four point four million, you will be hearing more on that update to the tail end of the meeting. As Mister Monday had uh indicated in his introduction. So when we incorporated that, the uh increase. Is now to three point six million. Okay, on here, uh this is the main slide. If you don't understand anything else, this is the main slide you need to pay attention to. Slide number seven, I have highlighted major changes. Year over year from twenty-five to twenty-six, it's a three-dimensional um. Uh slide to help explain the changes. So I have divided in the two segments, section A and section, section B. Section A is on compensation and benefits, and then section B is on. Other operational costs, and then when you get back to section A. I further divide it into compensation versus benefits. And then by employment status, meaning existing position, what does it mean, meaning? In the case where you have filled a position and then uh the employee left. Uh sometime during the year, and the position either got filled or not got filled. And the column next to it vacancies, meaning there are vacancies that have never been filled. And next to it, it's a new request that have not been uh. Incorporated or updated in the payroll extra system as being labeled. Vacancies, so they came in as part of departmental requests, okay? And then on there, you can see the highlighted at the bottom. Of the right-hand side, four point six million. And one point nine million is on section B total on operational cost. And then on section A, it's about two point seven million. If you were to look at the vacancy column, that is the most increase. For at by twenty-six, it's about one point six, one point seven million. Before this meeting, I just got an update from commission revenue, um there was. A position request of forty-six to forty-seven thousand that. Had not been incorporated in here, if I were to add that, it's about one point seven million.
Can we go through row two on here, just to make sure I'm following that, so?
Sure.
When you say, so a compensation increase on existing positions. If it's not the three percent, what is driving the compensation increase on existing positions?
Okay, uh let me just explain, maybe I didn't make myself clear, before I go down, let me just. This version of expenditure summary. Incorporate three percent for the state man- mandatory COLA adjustment. For the second year, along with three percent on local funding. So overall, there is a three percent COLA adjustment incorporated in this summary. Now, the way I slice and dice, I look at how much are vacancies. Across the board, from all departments. Vacancies, and how much are new requests are not yet in the system. Coming from department heads. And there were only a few, one from the treasurer's office, forty thousand plus three percent of twelve hundred. And then uh on the vacancies, the majority is coming from fire and EMS services. Because of the new department that got launched. For the safety, so you will be hearing more on vacancies related to fire and EMS. When they, uh after my presentation.
Yeah, I apologize if I'm somehow not asking the question clearly, though I'm not asking about vacancies. So row two.
Oh, row.
Existing, existing positions.
Okay. That three O eight must comprise of. Two department positions. One of them is finance, director of finance, and another one is community development. They were not really new, but they were existing positions, but the increase. It's about three O eight as compared to prior year. Did I answer your question?
You did answer the question, yes, I don't understand what, those were budgeted positions last year though. I don't understand why they would not be, why they were. They should have been in the budget last year.
They were in the budget, but. With a different amount, much lower amount. What I show here is purely the, the increase for the year of at by twenty-six.
Fair, since I appreciate you just following on that particular, that's, that's a really hefty amount of increase for two, for those two. Can you just track those, can you, can Pawn just offline track those back?
We, we could, um, and Pawn, please correct me if uh if I don't state this properly, I think what she's saying is. Those are the all-in costs, if you take the finance director plus the benefits, and the community development director and add them together. Because the positions were not funded in the current fiscal year. And that's why she highlighted those, because it'd be an increased cost, but those positions are still included. In the F Y twenty-six proposed budget.
But they, that's the thing.
Well, they were not filled, it's, it's really.
That's irrelevant to the budget.
Okay.
They were budgeted, the fact we didn't spend it, we're not talking about the actual cost, we're talking, they were budgeted, so it's not an increase to the budget. Do you see what I'm gonna follow, does that make sense? Let's just mark that as a follow-up item.
We will.
Okay, I don't need to go offline here, but I understand the vacancies one, we're gonna talk, we're gonna talk to the, focus on those.
Okay, I will do uh further analysis on that to help clarify. Uh, any questions on that page?
No more than one, and we'll get some follow-up on that one.
Very good, alright, if you're okay with the um. Section A, um I have label based on, on the had identified. Three percent COLA state funded position is where minimum fifty-eight thousand, and then local funding is about once fifty-nine thousand. And then the rest we have gone through and we will follow up on that. And then uh on line number six, annually, that was um. Requested by the commission revenue, I mean, sorry, the treasurer's office. In preparation for the transitioning of one key employee, that, that will get ready to be retired. At the end of the year, if that happens. Um, and then items seven to fourteen are pretty much um. Related benefits and tax elements of the um compensation that have been identified above. Uh this year, we have an increase in health insurance, uh that went up to about six percent. And there is a um newly introduced. Uh V R S hybrid uh of about twelve point four eight percent on contribution. That is close to being double when compared to last year. This year. It's about the second year whereby the state required the separation of regular V R S. Um, from the I C M A retirement.
That's mandatory, cause that, that's an enormous cost.
Yes, why, that's why I presented the um. Incremental change by employment status, if you look to the right.
Yeah.
Any vacancies ever to fill, we assumed they will come in. At the V R S hybrid, if they were not on V R S before. Unless they were on V R S, Plan One and Plan Two, and then the cost would be. Not at twelve point four eight, but at much less. Okay, and even then, as um last year, the um budgeted at seven point one three. This year, that rate had gone up for Plan One and Plan Two, to be at eight point nine eight. But for hybrid, it's much significant at twelve point four eight, and then did a lot of vacancies. And that tied double up.
Are we gonna get some kind of penalty on workers' comp, I mean, that looks like much bigger than just a standard increase year over year.
Have eyes for details, we have a situation with workers' compensation. Whereby, in order to have a good accurate billing information, they need. Information from the county, apparently, the information they got is not the right set of information. So therefore, there was an error in the set of information that they received. So now we got bill going back in time to, it's, it's a catch-up for the year. But at by twenty-sixth. So apparently, uh all employees' information were not provided to them, so now we, we have to kind of like pay. For the pass as well, not uh to stay caught up.
In a future board meeting, can we get an update on what that problem is?
Yes, yes, uh Mary Beth uh can provide that information, we'll get it, wait.
That's my last question, that slide, like you said, that's the, the big slide, so thank you.
And now, uh this year, looks like everything is going in the same negative direction, so. It is what it is, now section B, um. I highlighted all the um. Big ticket items like furniture, fixture, motor vehicles and equipment. It's close to ninety thousand dollars, about five hundred thousand of that is on our ship. So. Uh sheriff's office vehicles, uh I know last year we did not, uh the board did not approve that, so. They brought back that request uh this year. And then the outside in the uh agency.
Is all of that, is all of that eight seventy-six sheriff's office?
Uh, 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 it's only about four and fifty-three thousand if I remember correctly for sheriff's office. And the remaining difference is for the uh fire and EMS. And I know both offices will be presenting to the board that ask, so uh if you have any questions, you can wait until on that turn. To make a presentation. Uh, apologize for my cough, um alright, number eighteen, outside agency that you uh. Uh in the beginning, you uh you asked me to go through, that's the total now that we go up by um. Probably five thousand five hundred. Um, and then the professional services is about one oh five. And service contract is two and twenty-eight thousand, some change. Any questions on that, and um if not, if you move on to the next slide.
What are the outside agencies, is that more than what we? Local and regional organizations?
Outside agencies are all those that you uh have reviewed. And came up with uh what you were honored to ask in the last meeting. And um we can share with you a, a spreadsheet. That uh came up to that number, after the meeting.
But how?
I think, um. I don't see that number.
I don't.
With these added up, I would think like the health department. That wouldn't be in a outside agency, that would be in a regu- regular budgeted item.
Well, this is only the, and this should only reflect the increase. Right, this is incremental expenditure, so I don't see where we've approved incremental. Outside agencies of three hundred and fifty-three thousand. Sorry, three hundred, uh rip, I'm trying to follow the row across here, of three hundred and fifty-five thousand.
Okay, let me just explain. Okay, let me just explain out what happened. Um, last year. We could not identify how much in totality the board approved for outside agencies. We saw only a very small amount. So this year, with the interest of time, what I did, I just lumped them together. And I labeled to be determined in terms of how best to group them. And then I, I did a, I spent a little time. Uh, researching and tried to identify how much was approved last year, and I could not come up with. A number that is big enough comparable to this year. It will be very small. Do you recall how much you approved last year?
Can we get some clarification on that line item also?
I think what she's trying to say is the, the red boxes are more about the incremental increases. And what she did for the sake of time, especially with this one, we had no notes to go by. As to what was approved and what was not approved, we just had a bucket of funds that we had to allocate. But I think her point on that bottom is all the capital items and the other contributions. Those are not really about the incremental increases, but those are really the drivers in the budget. That run the cost of our budget up, and they are what they are. Uh, I've already said that I didn't really see any requests that I thought were ridiculous. But try to know that the top part of the spreadsheet is more about the incremental increases and the bottom is really just categorical. I think, uh, that's what, the way she set the spreadsheet up. But we don't really have a way to track, uh, other than what the bucket of funds are on the outside agencies versus which you approved today. We can get you that answer, cause that was in just one bucket and one line item versus which you've approved through today. We can give you that figure.
Okay.
On number twenty-one. When miscellaneous others, you know who was, what cost the most, what one category? Cause I know you threw a lump in there.
Yeah, I lump in that as negative one forty. Actually, they comprise up twenty to thirty different items. You will see the detail of that in the subsequent pages. Um, like I said, that's what I call expenditure highlights. If you want a complete picture, you will need to wait until I get to that screen and it will point out. So for essentially, they comprise of anything that is not on this page. I mean, uh, anything that isn't on this page, they net out to be negative one hundred forty thousand.
Okay.
I know there are a lot of numbers to fit on here, like in our pages and pages, so I just try to stay with the, uh, major highlights. To give you a sense of where the increase is coming from. But don't worry, there are more to come on the following pages. Are we good to move away from this screen? From this slide?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, uh, this is another look on the personnel costs by employment status. Uh, part-time, full-time vacancies, and then further. Uh, into department and then state funding, local funding. And number of headcounts, F T E headcounts, and, um, broken down by compensation and fringe benefits. Um, and then, um, I know EMS and sheriff's office. They'll be presenting their ass, so over here, we'll help highlight, uh, what those are. Over here, uh, are more detailed look. In order to come up with what make up one hundred and forty. This is the screen font, meaning you look at the each column on the far right. Which I split into personnel versus non-personnel. When you mark up the ones that I have, um, gone through on that slide. And anything, uh, that is left over, when you add them up. That you'll make up about one hundred forty thousand dollars, some change. I hope that helps, um. Over here, another thing to point out, the column called major is solely department code. Along with the narrative of what they are, make up what general government administration is. And then so on, so forth. And the heading here as well, as you can see, it's a long heading, but it's tried to make it clear. Meaning incorporating three percent cola for both state and local. Over here is, um, a close-up look on general government administration. Zoom into, um, a key highlights that drove the increase. I boxed the C S A, uh, to point out that there, there is indeed a local. Uh, share of funding of one hundred eighty thousand that we had to budget for. Last year, it was not, um. Budgeted for correctly. And in terms of the judicial administration, it's very linear. Um, there was a slight pickup, um, but. Beyond that, everything is very, very regular. On here, uh, slide eleven, public safety, you can save, uh, save this slide to make a reference to. When, um. The presentation, uh, of the Department of Safety. Uh, will be ex, uh, providing more explanations in terms of. What each one of this slide item is and why they ask. What they ask. So, uh, the combining total of public safety increase. Is about seventy-two, seventy-four, seventy-five percent of the overall, um, increase for the year.
You, you just pause for one quick second.
Sure.
So, Clarence, if you go back to. Um. Our meeting, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. Online. We have the budget detail breakdown. That I think will answer her questions. So it takes line by line. Like with every single code, exactly what made up. All of those high levels. So she, she can go back in then and see for. All of the, um, individual. Um, outside agencies, for example, exactly how much was budgeted for them, like community colleges. Exactly how much was in the budget, social services, area on agency, all of those.
And that was May fifteenth?
It's May fifteen.
Okay, May fifteen, okay.
May fifteen. I'm just, all the reason I said him is cause he can see my screen from here, sorry. So it's the detailed budget breakdown, the detailed revenue breakdown as well. So that's what was presented to us to go with the high level budget that then got approved.
Okay.
So I think that will be. I mean, it's twenty, uh, what, it's twenty-some page, but it's, it's individual codes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, that helps. So I will go back and then, uh. I will try to find home for each outside agency compared back to the last year. That they, uh, you have a better look on what is the true increase for the year. Very good.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, cause I get Clarence's point earlier on, it's not the major, but even if you take something that's a category of three hundred and some thousand. And you find, well, it's only a fifty thousand dollar increase, you know, forever. Every time we claw back a couple hundred thousand for any reason.
It adds up.
It adds up a lot, um, I think they're important, you know, if we look. I, I think this, you know, the compensation line, others, and again, even on the, the personnel. It's important to remember, these are the requests we've received. This is our starting point. We haven't approved any of these. Personnel, the added personnel at this point. This is just being presented to us as the initial request people are making at this point, so.
Good point, that's right.
Very good, very good. That's why they have this, uh, meeting so that any comments we get, they can go back in and incorporate them.
Right.
Very good. Okay, um, this is just to highlight, uh, in many directions. What personnel and non-personnel increase for public safety for the years. Okay, uh, over here, I collapse all departments and then summarize by object code. Meaning the true nature of each, um, by account, um, in terms of, um. Assessing where the major changes are coming from. Um, over here, it's only on the personnel cost increase. And that shows at the bottom of the page about two point eight million. A close to a million is in benefits and the remaining difference of one point eight million is in salaries and wages. And the box, uh. On top that, uh, call it show, uh, what are major changes are. Over here, it just graphical presentation of the personnel benefits. The, uh, big, the biggest, um, cost is on the health insurance, the first column there. Four hundred thirty-nine thousand and four hundred seventeen thousand dollars.
Six thousand.
Yeah, because, um, the majority of the enrollment, uh, and the assumptions that, uh. Along with the assumptions that we put into the API twenty-six, I either single, uh, dual. Meaning with one child coverage. Over here, it's just to show you infographic of employee account by type, uh, benefits portion. And, um, local versus state funding. And here is, um, the operational cost, non-personnel cost, um, rank them. With the top fourteen, uh, in, with the most increase, uh, for the year. But if you want the full, uh, load of that, uh, I have a file that I can share with you. Oh yeah, it's a debt service, uh, it's very linear, so there, there'll be a drop of about.
You have a question?
Yes, please.
Sure.
Thirty-three twenty, slide item, wanted to go back to page fifteen.
Okay.
How come it doesn't match the thirty-three twenty on page seven?
Hang on just a second, let me just go back. Big slide item again?
Thirty-three twenty. On page fifteen, it's the account number.
Okay.
Maintenance service contracts does not mount, does not match the one on page seven.
It's probably because, um.
Thirty-three twenty.
Yeah, I think I, I know what happened. Um, this could be because this is only on general fund. And on the other one is part for both general fund and the other funds. So, um, I probably will need to go back and add more clar- clarification on the slide.
Do you say it's all?
It's.
It's two grand, okay.
Thank you.
Very good, in terms of eyes for details. That's why I've been back last night to make sure that anything I missed, um, adding a clear label, I've been back. But even then, yeah, I still miss a few. Anything else that you, you noticed?
Ma'am, thank you.
Let me make a note, thank you, sir. Let me make a note here. Okay, um. Slide sixteen on that service, I must say Amelia County is very low debt leverage, which is a good thing. So a couple of, uh, loans will be paid up in, um, mid-year API twenty-six. As you can see here, um, the amount is very linear, very small. There is a slight drop, not much, but some saving. So I just present to you so that you're aware of where they're coming from. Four hundred sixty-three thousand seven eighty-four comprised of two different issuances. And then, um, business activities, you, you have, uh, four different issuances. And a couple probably of the year drop off at the end of the year.
Am I missing, which ones drop off? Am I missing something?
Uh, I have to go back to my note, I forgot which one, it could be the two thousand one.
Okay.
It's not much because the interest like is very, very low. If we choose to pay up now, obviously, just let it be. Are you good here?
Yes, ma'am.
Very good. And then, uh, slide number seventeen to the end of, um. To slide number twenty-five, it just marked to, um. For me to help provide to the board the, uh, actual train for the past ten years for each, uh, function. To give you a sense of direction and, um, how we move from one year to the next. So I, I'm not planning to go over any of these unless you want me to. And I have gone through that very quickly on all of these slides. Any questions for me?
No additions. Now, like you said, it's a starting point. I think we found a lot of good stuff to further discuss and keep working through. Thank you, Paul.
You're welcome. Should I close this slide?
Yes.
We go into C I P or we will wait until that time?
I think she's asking what to do now.
There's one more slide twenty-six, did y'all see that? It's personnel. Is there any way we could get a? It just says personnel, what position? I mean, I don't, I don't need names, but they're possible positions that.
It's possible. I have everything all in my file. I can, um, tie names and just put. The, uh, title of the position.
That'd be fine.
That may be good, okay. Can you make a note? Any other requests?
Anybody have anything else?
That's a whole lot of work, Paul.
Yes, even then, yeah. I tried to look at everything so that I will be able to answer all the questions.
That's the first time I've seen a detailed report like this.
Um.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
David, I mean, if we were getting, if it's the, if it was the same thing every year consistently, it would make this much, much easier, so. You know, I think, huh, the key, the key I said before is, you know, when you, when you inevitably roll off, cause you're a contractor. Um. You know, unfortunately, like you said, you don't have the advantage of much files left behind for you to reference. Please leave these files easily accessible for others to be able to work for, from in the future. We greatly appreciate that.
I'd say last year.
You're welcome.
Admiralty, so he's gonna give us, we didn't have any, really, anybody's.
All right, well, thank you, Paul.
You're welcome.
Mr. Clas will follow up with some others, other stuff.
Did that carry us through the bottom line revenue and expenditures currently?
That's probably so, Mr. Robinson. That's where we are now. Um, Paul, if we could get you just to walk the board, knowing that you've had a lot of information thrown at you the last couple of days, you and I were revising our revenue projections today. Just kind of tell us from what you see right now, what the total anticipated revenue is, and then what the requested department expenditures are. And that way the board can kind of see where we are as a starting point before we hear the presentations from our departments today.
Very good. Um, let's start with F I twenty-five. Definitely F I twenty-five estimate is looking good, so without a conversion of C D of three million, we are at twenty-seven points one or two million. Consistent with some of the board members that have been tracking and given that foundation, now segue into F I twenty-six revenue with, um, more updates as of this morning. Now, the revenue will be at twenty-six point six, close to twenty-six point seven million. With that, it's still not enough to cover the ask for all the expenditures that I have walked you through. And the expenditure is close to thirty million, short by a couple hundred thousand dollars. With that, if I were to incorporate the C I P of four point three, four point two, four point three million, based on the planning commission recommendation, collectively for all funds, including C I P, we still have a shortfall of three point six million. What I'm thinking, I have not talked to Mr. Monday yet, but he and I definitely in the next step of the budget, we'll, um, put our brain together to see how best we can balance the budget. I would say a lot of emergency services items for the year that they ask for F I twenty-six should belong, uh, should fit into capital items rather than operating. If we were to do that, and then we shall be okay in terms of budgeting, in terms of balancing the budget for F I twenty-six. Believe me, I could not sleep. I have been looking left and right on how best to balance the budget. So, uh, all we can do, um, vacancy filling in phases, uh, do the call adjustment in phases for our employees. Uh, but then you look at the total for every, uh, one percent adjustment, it's only monitoring, you know, it's not much, it's only fifty thousand to fifty-nine thousand dollars. But for the, um, positions that were funded by the state, uh, they, uh, by default, they get between three to five percent increase, primarily law enforcement and the elected officials. So with that, they, they are good. But keep in mind, there are a lot uncertainties, um, in the federal funding, uh, potentially impacting C S A as well, not much, but in terms of C S A, it's one way eighty thousand dollars that we have to address. If there is anything but to change between now and the next time. And none of us knows. The uncertainty index right now is at the highest. I listened to Dr. Shirley, um, on the economic update, so, um, yeah, there are a lot of concern around that. But luckily for Amelia County, we have a small portion funded by Fed and the rest are more like local funding is three quarters. I hope that quick update help, um, you to take back and then try to help us, uh, prioritize how best to balance the budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It'd be nice to come in here one year and get some good news. I mean, I, we are. How are we constantly? That far off.
That's, that's what I was getting ready to say, Mr. Chairman, uh, it, it's not uncommon to have more requests than you have available revenue and that's a tough part of your job is, you know, you hear good proposals from the department managers, constitutional officers from the school board, and you got to balance, you got to balance all that out and, you know, we're not trying to hang a problem, you know, on your doorstep or nothing like that. What we're trying to do is just to show you that what the budget's going to come down to is about choices and about priorities. Uh, really, it's those two principles. And you're going to hear from your next two presentations from the emergency management coordinator, EMS staff, and also the sheriff, that, you know, public safety, remember, is a very big segment on that stretch dollar bill that Miss Yusuf put in your board packet today, showing where those expenditures go. So really, public safety and education, those are your, uh, major funding. And all those are important aspects of the community. And remember what Miss Yusuf said, that we still have some options to balance the budget. There are some frozen positions. We still have some potential opportunities, uh, to move the pieces around with capital. Uh, you also, um, have other, uh, monies that you might could use. We're probably on the tail end of our ARPA funds. Uh, of course, you don't have to fund all of the expenditure requests that you have. So there's a way to get to where you need to go without doing it solely with tax increases or with tax increases, but you know, again, the main purpose of today is just to kind of show you where the staff is. And then, you know, we'll hear your feedback after these next two presentations and when we talk about capital. And then your guidance and input helps us decide how to move those pieces around to give you a balanced budget. And we will eventually get there. So you have a budget, but, uh, you're right, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is a, a typical year, really. Uh, I see this in every locality. I go in, the requests are always higher than the revenue that's projected to come in, and it comes down to where your priorities are.
Will we see a line item budget for each department?
Yes, sir.
When will we, when will we see that?
The budget most likely will be presented to you, I would say, around the first week, no later in the second week of April. That's when we'll have it balanced and we'll have it to you. It'll be proposed by category and specific line item.
Not before then?
No, not before then.
Okay.
Your target is going to be the first week of April.
We. Just to be clear, I mean, it's, how's that different than report three that she sent out? I mean, they've got, I mean, that's twenty-five pages by departments, each individual item. Is that, I think that's what you're asking.
I think Mr. Robinson was looking for it line by line. Maybe, did I miss it?
Yes.
Those are the requested, that's right.
Yeah.
Those, those are what the departments request in line by line.
Yeah.
Where'd you get that?
In an email today?
It is, it's, it's in. No, it's, it's like expenditure category, it's landscape on the page.
Three, report three, we've got report two.
Yeah, report three.
Summarizes the variances in the report three is twenty-five pages of line by line.
Who sent it? I'll go back.
I saved it.
I got you.
I had saved it, so I got the right email. It was from Ashley.
That was the original email.
That, that's.
Okay.
Ashley.
Yep.
All right, I got.
Right there.
All right, good.
So you'll see that revised when we balance the budget, you'll see there will be a new column that shows up on the sheet that shows the administrator's proposed budget.
Got you. I know Mr. Robinson has some, we wanted to see that.
I agree with him, but I think that's, I think that will do, I think that'll do it. Yeah, that's the one I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, that's report. Yeah, it's in there.
Okay. As long as anybody gets what they want. I missed that. All right, are we ready? To hear a couple of presentations?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Ken.
Hi, do you mind stop, uh, screen sharing?
I thought I closed already. Oh, oh, I see, sorry.
Yes, I'm glad that's there. That's, yeah.
If they're all the lines, that's it. You won't speak.
They're right, children. Yes. There's a lot of darkness.
You all ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We appreciate the opportunity to speak to y'all and hopefully answer any question that you may have about our, our budget proposal. I think everybody here understands the need to provide EMS service. The call volume has increased. We are certainly concerned about calls being missed, having to go to mutual aid, or calls that have an excessive response time. So that, that's kind of where we're at. We did add a, a third crew that you all were able to fund for us back in December. That has made a big difference for us. It's been a big help. It's brought in additional recovery, a revenue recovery as well as, uh, answering call for the, for service from our citizens. However, there are still times when we are struggling to, uh, meet our response goals. In a nutshell, we have issues with the need for calling for mutual aid from our neighbors as well as times when we just have excessive response times. Uh, we all provide mutual aid to, to one another. And we expect our neighbors to be able to handle their daily call volume and to call us from, or help when they get the overturned bus or the situation where they have a, a large number of of victims. However, we expect them, again, to answer their daily call volume, and that's what they expect of us. And that's what we're, we're trying to, uh, to achieve with this. At times during the week, we have three concurrent, uh, EMS crews available. Most of the time, we have two crews available, and there are sometimes during the week that we can only assure of one crew at any given time. So the purpose of us speaking to y'all today is to give you options on how you may choose to move forward with this. All the options are based on the ideas that we put forth back in twenty twenty at the direction of the board at that time for what we envisioned the future of fire EMS in the county looking like. So the three options that I'm going to share with you all, I'll follow along with that, uh, that document that we created a few years ago. There, each of the options has a number of different variables. But we're giving you three primary, um, pathways that you could potentially choose to, to follow. Option number one that we're presenting is to leave everything as it is. We wouldn't add anything additional. We just continue with the service that we have right now. And you can see on the screen there, that's a description of basically how that lays out. It's three hundred and thirty-six hours of coverage per week. And you can see how it is laid out between the multiple crews over the multiple days. That's certainly the simplest. It doesn't require any changes. It is the least expensive. However, it does not increase our coverage. It does nothing to correct any problems that we may have right now. We have no control over increased pricing from our vendor that provides the contract staff, as you all are aware. About eighteen months ago, they raised their, their prices in the middle of a fiscal year, which is difficult for us to, to handle within our budget process. There is no accountability to the company from their staff, and issues that we bring to their management are consistently dismissed. Also, this doesn't take advantage of any of the V R S hazardous duty supplement funding that has been already provided by the board in the past. This option is going to cost a little over two point three million going forward. And y'all can say that figure. We're going to go back to that later on when we show you a comparison amongst all of those, but that's the option for continuing with the service that we have currently. Option two, the second pathway that you could evaluate is transitioning to county employees EMS-only personnel. That would increase the staffing from three hundred and thirty-six hours to three hundred and eighty-four hours. Again, you can see a depiction on the screen there of how that would be laid out. There would be a slight, uh, increase in hours of coverage there. The biggest drawback to this that we need to be aware of is EMS-only personnel, like pretty much every other employee across the country is limited to forty hours of employment per week before we have to pay overtime. That's just federal law. In order to make this happen, it would require sixteen personnel, which would equate to four personnel per day over four, a four-day period. So it'll be a twenty-four hour by seventy-two hour schedule for those people. And then to continue that twelve-hour, uh, peak coverage shift that we already have, which is additional two personnel. So this would take eighteen personnel to make this happen. Should we choose to go this route, it would be phased in over time. We would not hire everybody at once. It would be phased in, and as we phase in employees, the contract staff would phase out. Should we choose to go that route? This does increase our coverage on peak times. It also gives us county employees that are accountable to the county staff, and they will have expectations. Eliminates any possibility of mid-year price increases outside of our normal budget process. Takes advantage of the V R S hazardous duty supplement that we are already paying for. And it should give us a stable staff that is comprised of individuals that are here on a daily basis, and they will learn the county, which is not necessarily what we have now. The, the cons for this particular option are, it is a slight, uh, uh, it is an increase in, uh, cost for this option. And a huge piece of that is related to that forty-hour work week and the excessive overtime that this particular model would include. That projected cost for this is, uh, just over two point seven. And that leads us to the third pathway that we could evaluate. This one is a transition to county employee fire EMS personnel. This would give us five hundred and four hours of coverage during the week, and you can see again on the, the graph how that would, uh, how would that would lay out. Basically, three crews, twenty-four, seven. With fire EMS personnel, federal law allows those folks to be worked at fifty-three hours per week before we have to pay overtime. So there would be an overtime savings. Again, that's federal law. This would require eighteen personnel as well. In this case, it would be six people per day spread over a three-day period, so it would be a twenty-four hour by forty-eight hour schedule. What that would look like would be two-staffed ambulances per day and one-staffed fire apparatus per day. The staffed fire apparatus would be available, that staff would be available for a third call, the third EMS call, should they be needed for that. This type of scenario would require us to have a schedule as we presented there, because if we hire people to be fire EMS personnel, they have to have time spent doing both fire and EMS. We could not hire them to be fire EMS personnel and then keep them on the ambulance all the time. We would be in the same boat with a number of our neighboring jurisdictions who had been to court and had to pay uh, large amounts of overtime to their staff when they were. uh, large amounts of overtime to their staff when they were found to be doing this. So this schedule would hopefully alleviate that. We had gotten legal counsel from the, the county's attorneys to make sure we're, we're meeting the intent of this. Again, this option would be phased in over time. Uh, just like the other, as our staff starts, the contract staff would be released. This certainly is not in any way intended to, uh, impact or, or supplant anything that the current volunteers are providing. There is no way that we could afford to replace the volunteer service that we have and we in no way want to impact how they do business or cause them any problems. These people would just be to supplement the current staff. The pros for this, it increases coverage tremendously. Again, they will be county employees. They will have expectations. They will be accountable to the county, eliminates price increases. Should be a relatively easier hire, hiring process. This will take advantage of the VRS hazardous duty supplement that we're already paying for. The staff will be knowledgeable of the county, just like, uh, the previous option. And this will provide cross-trained staff, so it should be a more efficient operation. The cons for this are obviously that it will be an increased cost. With that cost comes the extra coverage that we're talking about. This would absolutely require a close collaboration with the current volunteers. We feel like that we can address any concerns that they may have. A number of them are already on board with this idea. There are others that have some concerns and we're open to working with whatever proposal they may come back with, but we know that this is going to require close collaboration with them. The cost for this will be 2.87. So if we looked at all the options across the board to keep the same that we have right now, we're at 2.33. If we were to go to EMS only employees, that would be the 2.7. If we went with the fire EMS option, that would be 2.87. Just for comparison, if we were to try to cover the, with option three, if we were trying to cover tho- that amount of shifts with contract employees, we would have a, over $3 million budget for that. So if you're comparing apples to apples with coverage times, there is a savings by the county doing this rather than contracting it out. I know there are concerns about revenue. This is just to give everybody an update of where we stand. This was as of, the, the figures as of the end of January. We're at 482,000 in recovery for this year. If you look back over the past 12 month period, it was 919,000 billed, 572,000 collected with a net collection rate of about 62.2%. Average cash per trip over the past 12 months, $438 per trip. So to sum up, our minimum request, if we kept everything the same would be 2.3. If you chose the highest option, that will be 2.87. And if you just compare those two, for the additional 23% more funding, we would receive 50% more coverage time. Question, sir?
So maybe look at options. How do you picture? Have all pretty good scan or mail or your vision?
The current vision, which is certainly open to discussion, would be, at least initially, we would have two crews on an ambulance stationed here in the courthouse area. The fire crew for that day would pick up an ambulance at the EMS station when they go on shift in the morning. They would then drive to one of the firehouses that wanted to participate in this program and they would staff an apparatus at that firehouse for the daylight period of that day. If a fire call comes out, they respond on the fire apparatus. If the third EMS call comes out, they take the third EMS call. If a closer EMS call comes out that is closer to them than the courthouse, they may respond and handle that call or they may respond and take care of the patient until the crew got there from the courthouse. At the end of the day, because none of the, none of the firehouses currently are able to be slept in overnight, they would typically get an ambulance drive back to the squad building right now and they would staff that overnight. They would still be available for fire calls, but they would not be staying at the firehouses currently. Yes, for instance, they may be in Mamborough one day. They may be in Painville the next day. They may be in the courthouse the next day.
You don't keep it all for what district, county has most of all of them.
We can generate that information. And the, the,
Extra crews, they had a certain.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Same that I get this part of the county will get most of the calls.
That might be a.
It's still in Mamborough or Painville. I'm thinking we all.
Here you are, here you are.
The, the last time that I did tha- that study that you're looking at, the last time that I saw the data plotted on a map, the Chula area was a hotspot.
It's because of you. But you gotta remember now that all the facilities don't have any sleeping. You know? But you're the day, but you're the day that can't like that.
Yes, sir.
Let's say five years down the road or whatever, the same implemented and it works. How hard would it be to convert these stations to living quarters?
So you're referring to building out the firehouses so that we could house people there?
So that eventually.
Eventually, I, I don't know how long that would be. It might be five year. I, I don't know, but just to look forward to that station, the station in the courthouse and the station in the Chula area, Matox are probably going to be relatively easy to convert those to be able to stay overnight because of the way the buildings were designed. The firehouse in Mamborough could be relatively easily upgraded. That would take a little more funding for that. The station in Painville, it's landlocked. I, I don't know that that station would ever be able to be able to be manned the way it is right now without significant changes. And finally, the, the station in Judersville, the current building is not really designed to handle overnight stay. So it would take a pretty substantial change in that building to add that capability there. So that would be a bigger cost at some point down the road.
But that would also give you a couple of years to monitor this data to see which.
Certainly.
See which district is the busiest. Kimberly, do you want to say? You gotta figure for what we budgeted last year with the, when we added the third crew.
The total budget for years, that was right?
Yeah.
1.8 almost.
Okay. What do you guys on there?
Kimberly has to ask, answer the hard questions.
That's a cool question. One, I guess another station had room for the ambulance parking setting on fire. Is the ambulance safe to be sitting with the station unattended or would put it in there?
We would have to work on those details, but certainly once a fire apparatus is pulled out of a firehouse, there is a, a spot that an ambulance could be parked in. If we were concerned about that, if it was safety or security or even temperature. It would be, it would be all secured. Yes, sir. But to add additional information to your question that you didn't really ask, I don't think any of the current firehouses have space inside right now to keep an ambulance in.
It will be able to, the volunteers are capable of this, okay?
We actually met with the fire chiefs last night to give them a heads up of what we were going to be presenting to you all today. And at that meeting, three of them were 100% on board. Uh, two of them had some concerns. I, I feel pretty certain that at least one of those, we can address his concerns. I'm not sure if we'll be able to address the, the other concerns, but we're certainly open to open discussions with any of them.
But it's their option.
It is absolutely their option. We're not, their, their intent is not to force this on anybody. If, if we could do it right now today, I know three of the, the five fire stations that they, they want help right now.
Well, I think that's the key and it's, it's help. You're offering something to them and you're not taking anything away from.
It's two people. That, that does not replace anything that they're doing. It takes a dozen or more people for significant fire.
Take, literally, we're taking no funding away from them. We're taking no authority, responsibility away from them. We're offering assistance to them. By the way, I know most, if not all of us, can have, if you want to talk about details on this, but, um, and what the county gets back is tremendous. I mean, if you go, if you're able to go back one slide, I mean, for extremely minimal extra cost, you get to that one. We're getting tremendously higher coverage.
Yes, sir.
To, for, for our citizens.
For the, the money being spent.
Now if you bounce, now if you bounce forward to that one of, that one right there, I mean, we're gonna ha- I don't think we have much of a choice but to increase the, the the spending here. We're not covering what the citizens need. We're relying on Chester all too often, but you know, you're, you're kind of money point here. 23% more funding. You're getting 50% more coverage.
Yes, sir.
Any other option, you just don't get anywhere near that benefit. So the, the fire EMS option gets you tremendously.
Option number two isn't, the figures are not up there for that as far as percentages, but for option number two, it's about a 16% increase in funding and it's about a 14% increase in coverage.
Yeah.
I'm listening to the radio a lot. These folks, they may swing by our fire station, but they will be EMS is busy folks.
Okay.
The ones that don't know it, it is, it's busy. And this third crew is going to be very, all, all three crews will be busy.
It used to be, well, it doesn't matter. It, volume is increasing. Yes, sir.
So what happened? They're looking at it. They are, they say, so they watch the duck, keep the place hanging up and they take on duties that volunteers get there, something over.
That is correct. They would be tasked with whatever we would expect them to be while they're sitting there. They would be cleaning the trucks, cleaning the stations, cutting the grass, doing all the normal station work that a firefighter would be expected to do. At no cost to the fire department. The volunteer fire.
Upgrade on the parking lot. Does that come under y'all's budget for counties, what of, of the tall, the campus, by the park?
Has Mr. Mr. Goff, he's.
We would be working with Darryl. I understand that is a very tight. It's, it's used for polling locations, so. Yes.
Can't close this block in the factory.
Yes, sir.
Didn't close it? Okay, that's it.
Maybe that's a switch I have.
Yeah, that's what. Go ahead.
Um, can we, it was an update on the radio that you all that want to have or something on that?
Yes, sir. The, to my knowledge, and I, I could be wrong, I believe all the county agencies have their radios currently, they're operating on their radios. We've actually, we've been operating for about two months now with a lot of people and we're going through our first upgrade of our software programming stuff right now. Within the county, as far as I know, everybody's operating as expected. We are still working with their neighboring counties around us to work out the mutual aid agreements. It's first, we have to, to do the paperwork so that both agencies, both counties agree on how we're going to operate. And then after that's done, we have to buy the hardware that actually physically connects us with our neighbors. And we are actively engaged with every one of our surrounding counties right now on that. So that, that will be corrected soon.
But when they are the campaign.
Correct. It's coming. It's absolutely coming. It was designed to do that and it will do that when we're finished.
The radio is supposed to every station, something that comes in, but that here. They will. What's your call? I knew they were talking about something.
There, there were some additional radios. The, the fire department specifically, the volunteer fire department had some concerns about being able to talk to the helicopter, the medical helicopter. And these, from, right now, from their trucks, from the mobile radios and their apparatus, they can talk, they can talk just fine to the helicopter. They wanted the ability to talk on a, a portable radio. And to do that, it's, it's more expensive, but we were able to find the funding and to, to get five more radios, one for each station. How they choose to use it will be their, their decision, but each station will be getting at least one radio, portable radio that'll be capable of talking to the helicopter as well.
They can talk to the local law enforcement on that radio also, right?
Yes, the capability is there.
Well, I'll just tell you what we were talking about, just to make sure, when, when you, I want to make sure what I'm understanding is right. That option three is what you've put forward upon is calculated into the current budget. Is that right?
That's our understanding of it. Yes, sir.
Any more questions? Thank you for all the work, Neil.
Thank you all for your time. You all have a hard decision, but.
Thank you.
All right, Sheriff. Looks, I don't think y'all have anything in your book about hours, maybe.
I tried.
Phillip's got, he's gonna hand y'all. We're not quite as technical as the last present ourselves.
We do have to get an electronic version though, so that it's posted.
I got you.
For our citizens.
Thank you, sir. All right, through this thing, um, if you have any questions about figures and whatever, some other stuff. Phillip and, uh, some of the staff, they were really engaged in this thing. So he is, he's a lot more adept on the figures than I am. Um, what we've proposed, um, let me say this. Um, the 6% increase that the state is giving to the dispatchers was not figured into these figures. The 3% was figured into these figures that, that you have there. Um, also, the state is given a one-time 1.5% bonus. Um, which is effective July 1st. I'll throw this out here, um, maybe towards, uh, the end of, you know, in the May and June. We could possibly have that figure in this year's budget if you, we were allowed to put that in and pay it. And July, the money is going to come to the county anyways. So we could possibly do that and forgo any other, that expenditure maybe on July 1st, if you follow me. That's just food for thought. Uh, we had our budget, we have, we had asked, um, our, our biggest things we're asking, one we're asking for is, uh, two new deputy positions and to unfreeze the position that is frozen now. Um, and that, that, as those figures are there. So it's not three, it's, it's unfreeze one and then two additional. Well, we're unfreezing one. I'll have, one's gonna retire on July 1st. And then the two new physicians would make, actually, three new physicians. Or it would be the frozen physicians plus two more. And, because the other one I already have, he's just retiring.
And that's in here.
What?
That's, that's factored in.
Yes, it's all factored in.
Gentlemen, just to circle back for one moment, the sheriff was mentioning the 6% that is not listed in here, which was given by the state to dispatchers. That 6% is in addition to the 3% that all state employees get. So it's, they're getting 9%, that's for dispatcher statewide. And again, we didn't include that in our proposal because at the time we had to give you these numbers, the state was still working through what they were gonna do for dispatch. Obviously, if the county doesn't match that 6% on their end, there's gonna be an uneven distribution because we have some dispatchers who are state employees. We have some that are fully county funded. I think this is something y'all, y'all did with us before, but that 6% from the state is only gonna impact state-funded comptboard dispatch positions. Whereas, you know, we normally want to get the same amount to our comptboard as well as our county-funded employees. So that, that was the big thing. And then like the sheriff said, through our vacancy savings, that bonus money, we should have that on this fiscal year. If it would just be easier right before closing to do those bonuses, then the county just absorbs the money that the state gives post-July 1. If, if we can't do it that way, we would essentially be asking you guys to reappropriate some of the money we're giving back. But I do think that money will be there in our vacancy savings from a couple of dispatch openings that have come open on this fiscal year. So it's kind of a, which way do you want to do it? Which way is the easiest, most efficient way? But that was just something we had come up with. As far as the positions go, the only thing that we had talked about, the sheriff, I wanted to kind of mention. I know it seems like every year there's these positions, but these are still just the, the two new ones that were part of the four we requested back on fiscal year '24. And then obviously, the frozen one was frozen last year. So these are the positions we've been trying to get for a couple of years. If we got all of them, it takes our number in the agency to 30, which is kind of where we would like to get to be able to do everything we need to do. I will say, after these positions were factored in, we don't foresee needing to continue to ask, you know, if you give us these next year, we're not coming back next year saying, hey, we need one or two more. It's, you know, we're not on a hamster wheel where we're just gonna be asking you guys for more bodies every year. This, this is the number we're trying to get. We're really trying to bump our patrol division up to get one more on each side to help with staffing. You know, right now, we have a minimum staffing of two deputies on a time at patrol, but it doesn't take much to tie those guys up and we're trying to get those numbers up to where there's, we can safely answer these calls, but also to where people aren't waiting. Can't mention how there can be an extended ETA on some of these EMS calls. We have the same problem in the sheriff's office just because the volume is there. A lot of times, there's just more calls coming in that there's people to answer them. And I think that's, that's our big thing. Obviously, vehicles is a, is a huge line item this year from where we didn't get any this year, or see, on this current fiscal year. You know, we, we definitely need to get the vehicles this year. It's been, it's been difficult, but luckily we, you know, not the people that haven't had any tragedies, try to our fleet this year. And I know that's a huge number to look at, a lot of items, those vehicles are really important. I'll just keep our fleet up and running.
Yes, on that, one vehicle is 337,000.
Is that on the, that, that total should be, that's five, if I'm not mistaken, sir. Yeah, the 453.
Just looking, I'm looking at, I'm looking at your request funding for patrol vehicles and the amount of 337,000. I was just.
Okay, so the 300, so the number that's on the front page, the 453, that includes, that is actually seven vehicles because when we add a new position, it's factored in a new vehicle to go with this new position. The number I believe you were looking at would be for five, which is what we would do to replace existing cars, not with a, a new staff added. So you're kind of looking at the budget as is, it would really be for seven cars, five replacements and then two brand-new ones for the new personnel that we've requested, if that makes sense.
I have a question about your cars.
Yes, sir.
Each deputy is assigned one car for 24 on 24/7, right?
Yes, sir.
Do some localities have, when you go off your shift, hard parking station and another patrolman uses the same vehicle?
You see that more in, in the larger urban departments, Petersburg and RPD. But most places have tried to get away from that because it's just so bad for the car to even run in 24/7. Even an agency as big as Chesterfield PD, for instance, now with 500-plus officers, they've gone to personal assigned vehicles because the cars just last longer when you got one person driving them. But they, that world does exist in certain places, yes, sir.
Counterbalance to buying 20 cars when you can get by with 10 and replace. You follow what I'm going, I mean.
Yes, I see you.
Just to say, it's a cost to buy so many cars.
Yes, sir.
But what that does.
It does wear the vehicle out quicker, I understand that.
No, what, what that does is if, if something happens and I need that officer to be called at at night, then he doesn't, he doesn't have a vehicle to respond where we need him.
It is also, as much as you hate to have to admit it, it's a recruitment incentive nowadays because so many places offer take-on cars. And the fact is, we have quite a few deputies who don't live in Amelia anymore. You know, so if guys can go somewhere where they're gonna get a take-on car. Unfortunately, that's something people factor into the, when they choose where they want to try and work at.
Can, can you get me the year and the mileage of every car you have so I can see how many you have? How many miles as well?
Yes.
And you said what, you get, if you get the three positions, you'd have 30 deputies, so you got 27 now.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And the next thing we need is the, or the next thing I need, I'm not speaking for everybody, the dispatch positions. How many are state and how many are local so we can figure that out?
Yes, sir.
Well, five are comptboard positions and the, if one were fully staffed, the other five are county positions. We have some that are comptboard, some that are full county. So five and five.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Did dispatchers ever get where they were covered under Leo? I know it was a bill trying to be pushed to. I think with that 6%, I think that it, that was part of it. That, that was, that was gonna be a big help for them.
May I ask Tom a question?
Cool.
Tom, did you, did you already have the 6% or the state-funded dispatch positions factored in? Oh, you're muted.
I hear you.
If I heard you correctly, we had, I have factor into 6% for dispatcher. If it was not in the request, it will not be included. It was not included.
All right, because that, but that was, it's probably because that was late break-in from the state too.
It was.
State budget, all right. So just, we just make a note, follow up on that then, because it'd be state funding from the comptboard, an additional 6% for those. Does everyone, I mean, so they have, so she can work with something. So everyone agree, the other six, I'm sorry, the other five should receive the same 6% from the county, okay?
And that is something that has been in the General Assembly two or three years back. And it's finally just came to fruition this year, so.
Is that way, I have something clear to work, work with and get to make a call on that, so.
Eagle, keep going.
Well, that's about the meat of it.
Okay.
The rest, the rest you can see on the front page there is, and through your binders, you know, we really, some, some has increased and some has went down and some is pretty close, so. You know, we haven't been, it's not a big increases from what the, from the last budget. The personnel and vehicles was your biggest increase, that's it.
Got you, makes sense.
We got a lot of paper today, so pardon me if this is in there and I can't remember it. Do we have a summary of all the positions that are being asked for across the departments?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I, I think it's cumulative. I think it's for all the frozen positions, maybe, Tom. Is there a specific list that has just the newly requested positions?
Actually, both would be nice. Yeah, either we're requesting to unfreeze slash new, yeah. Because I think that's, I think that's gonna have to be something that we discuss, not necessarily today, but at some, at some point to like, make some decisions on.
It's important.
Did that last piece of head personnel? When we asked for the description, job description? Is that?
I'm not sure. Like I said, I may, we got a lot, we got a lot of paper today, which is okay. I just, I'm, I want to make sure I'm clear where to look for that, because.
I know we have a spreadsheet somewhere. I've seen it.
Yeah.
Ratio.
Can you get that for us, Lawrence?
Yes.
Well, the ratio right now is one to every 1,500.
1,500.
People. And of course, we're, as some counties are, we're one of them, we're, we're probably over that ratio. So, but I, you know, I look, gotta look at the call volume, call volume increases. With the addition of all this, it would give us eight people to work a shift, which four on, four on each time. But you gotta figure in people on vacation, people in school. You'd have at least maybe three on to that four.
Very clear.
All right.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah, but you got a moment, Daddy, if I'm gonna took care of it.
Oh, you better go, right? Babe, you should have not told Mom and Daddy.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.